All right. Good evening and welcome to the August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. Like to welcome everyone. It's nice rain over the last few days, much needed. Uh, we got Commissioner Tucker zooming in tonight. And uh, we'll just go ahead and get on, get on into the meeting. Looks like we've got, it might be lengthy. But uh, we'll first have our invocation and pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Larry Johnson. Would please stand.
Our Father in heaven, as we come to thee in humble prayer this evening, we should thank thee, Father, for this opportunity that we have together. Uh, government function here of Surrey County, Board of Commissioners. Thank thee for all that, everybody that showed aim and were safe trap. Thankful Father again for this opportunity that we have to discuss the affairs and the business and help us tonight in our decision making and that we can uh, that we can listen and that we can discern and that we can do what we feel like important and necessary for very. The thankful Father for those that volunteer. The thankful for those that uh, work in our law enforcement and fire safety and all other services here in Surrey County. We thank thee for our service men and women for him. We thank thee for all the elected officials of this country and state and also here in. We pray, Father, that thou will bless each and every one that with our health and strength, especially during the resurgence of this pandemic. We pray that we can uh, be safe in it and that we can stay out of harm's way. Asked for this hour or two that we're together this night, that uh, a special spirit can be with us and that we can go, go this night in our, to our homes and other destinations and say these things we ask to pray in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. First on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Everyone has had a chance to look over everything. Uh, do I have a motion, gentlemen?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve the agenda from Commissioner Goins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. All right, next is the approval of the July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting minutes. You'll have a motion.
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Harris to approve the July nineteenth minutes. I'll second that. Commissioner Marion, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the consent. I believe we have seven, eight bullet points. And I'll uh, ask uh, Mr. Canoff if he will guide us through those.
The first item is a request from the Sheriff's Office for a tracking system within the detention center. That's the Guardian RFID system. Next are the tax department end of month summaries, reports, charges that are always part of the second meeting of the month, uh, consent agenda. There's a request to replace the ice machine in the health department. There's a request to um, close Twin Oaks Road and other surrounding roads for the Running of the Vines event that's upcoming. Budget amendment number one is included here. Basically, this will reduce a number of uh, items in the board of elections budget due to the um, moving of the Mount Airy election, city of Mount Airy election um, to even years. There's also some increases in the sheriff's tactical supplies, moving funds from the jail budget and a transfer for another line item. There are no additional funds that are being moved into the budget. It's just moving some funds around for a purchase that they desire to make. Changes in several health department programs, and this is related to rollover funding adjustments um, from last fiscal year. An updated amounts to the detention center facility budget uh, that could correspond to a capital project ordinance amendment, which is also included. This is for construction of the new detention center and nine-one-one center. And finally, she has an attachment that I'm, I say she, Rhonda Nixon, the finance officer for uh, she's providing an updated list of deputy finance officers and deputy purchasing agents that the board will need to approve. And there's also an increase to micro purchase threshold res- resolution uh, which has been submitted by Denise Brown and that's board will need to approve as well. And that's the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right. You've heard the county manager, gentlemen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried. All right, next on the agenda is our open forum. Uh, you've, as part of the meeting, you can come up and talk about just about anything you want to, and you'll have three minutes. After the three minutes, you'll hear a little alarm. And I will ask you to wrap it up. So, anyone here for open forum? All right. Yes, we will ask you your name and telephone number, and after you tell us that, the time will start.
Thank you.
Commissioners and managers, my name is Gail Straight. My phone number is nine one zero two three one three eight three zero. My husband and I live at one seven one eight Spargo Road, Mount Airy. I want to address the Gordon Recycling business at one six eight eight Spargo Road. Since this business has opened, it has been a nuisance and a detriment to this community's physical and mental health and well-being, the environment, and our property values. Points of concern regarding the operation of Gordon Recycling include, but are not limited to. It's currently operating without a DEQ industrial stormwater permit. It's also um, under the original ordinance, two point five in the updated ordinance, number seven. The stream running off of one six eight eight Spargo, Spargo Road flows into Benson Creek, which is a WS four um, protected watershed, then into Stewart Creek, which is a WS four P classified protected watershed creek. That is prohibited in both ordinances and should cause immediate revocation of the compliance permit. We cannot use a five acre pasture for our cattle because their water source would be Benson Creek. Eventually, our water wells will be contaminated from the residual liquids leaking from the vehicles, mercury and heavy metals. The air can be polluted by asbestos being released, residual fumes from petroleum, diesel and refrigerant that has not been recaptured from vehicles, freezers or refrigerators. Screening, original ordinance, section one point five and two point two, updated nine D. There is no screening device to screen visibility when the business is open. Vehicles and metal scrap is stacked well above the top of what screen there is, and you can see it whether the business is open or not from the road and our property. Noise pollution, the constant loud noise of crushing metal, glass, dump trucks and trailers offloading and trailers being reloading is horrible. My husband works from home and he can hear the constant drone even with the windows closed and the air conditioner on. We can't go anywhere in a house or anywhere on our property without hearing the noise. Nor can our neighbors that are closer, that have children. I can't imagine kids being able to take a nap or that shift workers can get any rest during the day. I work outside most of the day and it's really horrible to have to listen to it constantly. It's like living through a hurricane every single day. Updated ordinance number two, this ordinance itself should have kept the business from opening. It is clearly within a half mile of residential properties. It's yards from residential properties. Property value as well as rental capabilities will suffer from this business being opened. Significantly increased traffic on Spargo Road, including more tractor trailers, dump trucks and trucks pulling trailers. On one day alone, there was a truck with a tow dolly that was disabled on the side of the road and a vehicle that had been pulled by a car with a chain flipped over in a sharp curve just north of Spargers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Straight. Anyone else?
Hello, everyone. I'm Anna Tenney. My phone number is three three six three five one five three two eight, and I live in the Mount Airy vicinity off of Woodville Road. I cannot give my exact address because of what I do. Um, I'm here to speak to you all and the county on matters of a movie being filmed here in Surrey County by my friend Nick Barnett and I. We are doing the movie for veterans. It's to bring awareness to the civilians that have not served in the military, how it is for them to go from the civilian life to military life, back to civilian life. Cause many people look at veterans as having a lot of mental issues because they served in the military and that is so incorrect. They do suffer from PTSD and other depression, and when they come out of the military, they suffer a lot because some of them cannot find jobs. This movie is to bring awareness to everybody, to that person that is going through this, is called one phone call. The reason being is that one phone call could be the phone call from you saving their life or the phone call that you get that they've passed away from suicide. And it's not just for the military. The one phone call is for everybody. And we want to film some of the scenes here in Surrey County because I live here in Surrey County. I want to bring more people into Surrey County and business to Spray County. So we ask that you all allow us to film this movie, some of scenes here in Surrey County. I'm also here to speak about Little Bricks Charity. It is a great charity. It takes donations of Lego sets or money to give to children that's in the hospital that can't go home to their families. We would like to raise a charity here. The man who is over is also a social media influencer like myself. And we would like the county's permission, along with the public in Surrey County, to bring him here with, along with some more of our influencer friends to bring awareness to the children's hospitals because we have one right down the road in Winston. These children deserve happiness, even though they can't go home, especially during these times. And this is what I wanted to bring to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, we will close the open forum. Next on the agenda, agenda, yes. Oh, yes, okay. Sorry, I didn't, I was looking down.
Evening.
Evening. I'm David Straight, uh, Gail's significant other. Um, just like to complete the rest of her statement. My phone number is nine one oh two three one thirty-eight thirty. We've moved to Mount Airy to uh, move away from the coast where significant weather events had impacted our, our farm. Uh, specifically the, the last hurricane. And we, we chose that property because it suited our business model to raise livestock. I was impressed with how quiet and peaceful it was during the day, um, yet how convenient it was to all of the services that we need, hospitals. Uh, um, and so we bought that property two years ago. Uh, we have intended to grow that business into uh, agrotourism, uh, rent visits, uh, show off uh, the, the rabbitry and livestock, uh, also build uh, some rabbit and uh, a chicken processing right there on the uh, on the facility. Uh, eventually like to add a small inspected commercial kitchen that will allow for us to uh, do additional process into our meats and do baked goods. Um, but right now, literally, that piece of property is sitting right next to Gordon Recycling and is fifty yards from where they're dismantling the cars uh, and sorting all of the different metals that are coming in. You know, when, when I looked at this property, we really thought it was an ideal situation for us, but frankly, um, with, if Gordon Recycling is going to continue to operate, we don't see the possibility to expand the agrotourism or put a commercial kitchen in um, that, or processing for the meat. So, uh, we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Straight. Anyone else? All right, next is Penny Harrison, our tax administrator. Good evening, Penny.
Hey, how you doing?
How are you?
Good.
Well, you, I've seen that you've got some good news.
Yes, we sure do. We have some good collection rates to report tonight. For June, um, for real and personal, we have ninety-eight point eight eight, which is the highest for real and personal that we've ever recorded. So we're very proud of that. With a combined of, including motor vehicle, uh, we have ninety-nine point zero one. So we are very, very proud.
Chairman, can you get her to speak up there a little bit, huh? Yeah.
With June real and personal, ninety-eight point eight eight, when you take the motor vehicle collections and combine that, that is ninety-nine point zero one. So we are very, very proud of that.
We are too.
Yes, yes. I brought a couple ladies tonight with me and I wanted to recognize those ladies. If they want to stand, Mallory Lefwitch and Donna Davis. And they helped bring that with, you know, for the county. So, I wanted to give them a hand tonight.
Want to thank you and your team for everything.
And everyone knows, I think, on the board, Deanna, my assistant.
She should have stood up too.
Yeah.
Does she carry the gun?
Yeah. The enforcement, the enforcement measures that were used were courtesy calls, courtesy emails, delinquent letters, wage garnishments, bank levy and debt set off. We did not use any foreclosure this past year due to COVID. We did not do anything in that matter. We sent out three thousand seven hundred ninety-seven letters to taxpayers for debt set off. In comparison to January of the prior year, that was five thousand five hundred forty-three letters. So there was a significant decrease this past year. One thousand nine hundred ninety-nine paid their taxes before the clearinghouse deadline this year. In comparison to the prior year was two thousand two hundred ninety-five. So I think um, the, the um, the stimulus did help in, in comparison to the, the prior year, along with, you know, people really do want to pay their taxes in this county. Two thousand two hun- two thousand six hundred ninety-eight were sent to the clearinghouse in comparison to three thousand two hundred and forty-eight were sent prior year. And we collected a little over fifty-six thousand dollars from the clearinghouse this year in comparison to forty-nine thousand in the prior year. So I think debt set off is a very good tool. And then the plans for next year, we are hoping to do some more, we hope to use foreclosure if it is allowed, which I plan to, you know, we got approval from you guys. So we're going to do some September seventh, we'll process some. The or the um, the settlement you have in your packet. You have the charges and then you also have the delinquents. And I'll, and then you have the resolution that I will need you to look over. Chris, will he need to read that aloud?
We need to adopt the resolution?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion, gentlemen?
Adopt the resolution to the tax collector, Daniel Sediment, this year, twenty twenty-one and prior.
Motion by Commissioner Goins. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Johnson, any discussion?
Is there any obligation? Ed, did we read this verbatim?
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Uh, while you're here, I would uh, not only like to thank you and your staff, but uh, I'd like to thank all the citizens of Surrey County. Uh, that's a, a very good number we had this year and uh, we do have some good citizens here that like to pay their taxes, so. It's what makes, it's what, it's what makes it all go round and round. So, thank you so much, Penny. No, we haven't. Okay, you got one, one more thing?
Your right. The write-offs. Yes, sorry about that. We, I do have a write-off request for the two thousand and eleven taxes. The principal was seventy-five, six forty-eight, ninety-four with interest fifty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-five for the total of one thou- one hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred eighty-four fifty-eight. If approved, I will be able to write those off September one, twenty twenty-one. It is, you know, I have that list. If you would like to review it in my office at any time. And that is up to you if you would like to write those off.
Motion, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to uh, write off the property taxes for the year two thousand and eleven in the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand five eighty-four fifty-eight cents.
Motion by Commissioner Harris. Is there a second? I'll second that, Commissioner Marion. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Right next is Mr. Johnny Easter, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Commissioner Marion. Um, tonight I bring before you the rezoning approval case for CZR one-two-one-one. Applicant is Kenny Hight. Uh, the current zoning is rural agriculture. The proposed zoning is community business. It is uh, combining two parcel IDs, number ending in numbers four nine oh six and three says and three seven eight four. Uh, the proposal is to reclassify to contiguous parcels totaling about one point nine two acres for community business purposes. Specifically for mini warehouse storage, the property would be combined for a single business use. This is a general use rezoning. Uh, the property owner is Mr. Kenny G. Hight. Uh, the property location is on South McKinney Road. It's just east of Highway six oh one. Uh, like I said before, the acreage is one point nine two in total. It's uh, maintained a RA rural agriculture classification since original zoning in two thousand and one. Uh, it's a medium density land use, uh, general, many in media area. The primary residential, residential use is surrounded by opening uh, wooded rural lands. Agriculture is the predominant non-residential use in the general area. There are scattered non-residential uses in the White Plains area south of Mount Airy. Community business and rural business zoning are located east of the property intersection of South McKinney Road and Old Highway six oh one. It's cleared farmland around it. Uh, it is consistent with our twenty forty general land use. Uh, the staff discussed with the applicant in July one, I'm sorry, in July, uh, community business is located nearby and would be consistent with surrounding development pattern. Uh, our staff did recommend to the planning board, requested this rezoning. Uh, it was unanimously approved by the planning board and we received no phone calls, nobody showed up during the planning board meeting. Any opposition whatsoever to the rezoning request.
All right, uh, I will now close regular meeting and open up a public hearing or rezoning case numbers ZCR one-two-one-one. Is there anyone here to speak on this? All right, I will now close the public hearing and open the regular meeting back up. All right, you'll hear a motion, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the statement of consistency as recommended by the planning director.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Harris to adopt the statement of consistency. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, do I have a motion to rezone? Case number ZCR one-two-one-one. From rural agriculture to commercial, community business.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Easter. All right, next is Jessica, Jessica Montgomery, Public Works Director. Good evening.
Hey there. Um, the first item I have is we're solid waste consultants. Earlier this year, we put out an RFQ for solid waste consulting, engineering and environmental monitoring services. And we actually had none respond to that. All were very qualified firms, so then become the research, going through and checking all the references and it took, took us quite a bit of time, but we feel confident that um, our choice was a Smith and Gardner is our top choice. And our second, Garrett Moore, and third, HDR. So with your approval, we can begin negotiations with the number one selection to see what the prices would be and see how to move forward with this work.
It need to be a vote or consensus?
It needs to be a vote.
All right, do I have a motion, gentlemen? So allow them to proceed. Motion by Commissioner Goins. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
We got a lot of discussion outside.
I know. Had a second right there from me, from him. All right, the next item that I have is a, the scrap tire program and contracts or proposed contracts. And the scrap tire program or the Scrap Tire Disposal Act, that's a law for safe disposal of tires. And each county in North Carolina is responsible for having this scrap tire program. And a disposal fee every time you go get tires is put there on your bill. So we're not allowed to charge for tires. Um, the counties, uh, nobody's, uh, let's see, we have, unless you have the appropriate paperwork. So when you go and you fill out the appropriate paperwork, as a resident, you don't pay anyway. Everybody gets five. In our operation plan currently, and the way it works currently at the landfill is you bring the used tire people and all the commercial. The used tire people and all the commercial tire people bring everything over, fill out the form. We don't really verify anything, we just check to make sure the form's there. And then they, they get to dispose of the tires. We keep a record of the tires and give it back to the state, but the state reimburses us based on per capita, not per tire. But we still have to submit all this and we do get grant money. Or can apply for it. What's happened is we've done business with Central Carolina Holdings for several years and this contract has come to an end. The price has went up quite a bit from our current seventy five dollars per ton to ninety five seventy two per ton. And you've got to add. Twenty, or you've got to add the freight charge, which we've never paid in the past of seven hundred and forty eight dollars every time they come and pick them up. They get three of these a week, so that's going to add up. We're already losing about fifteen to twenty five thousand dollars a year. On tires, based on what the count, what the state gives us back. So you can see we're going to go even more in the hole. Looked around and got a couple other contract proposals, one U S Tire and Concord. They're at the same rate, ninety five seventy two a ton. And the freight would be five eleven fifty, gets a little cheaper because they're a little closer, so the mileage is down. But they do require you to stack the tires in the trailer as opposed to open top and loading them. You would have to hire two or three more people to do this properly to get the ten tons required. And then you're going to have more loads, because we can get about seventeen tons in an open top. And then there's another option that's located right in Pilot Mountain. This is a local operation. And he has provided a proposal of a hundred and twenty five dollars per ton. And there's also, this could become our scrap tire collection. Site in Surry County, every county is required to have at least one. It, it could be Pilot Mountain, New River Tire in this instant, so. Parish Tire, Elkin Tire, everybody could bring them straight to that facility. And they would take the paperwork up and at the end of the month, they would give us the statement with everything, so it would save us in the long run as well. But I've got a sheet in here that shows the breakdown of how much it's going to cost, our budget is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we're going to go over budget any way we. Any way we go, but you can see Central Carolina Holdings in that spreadsheet. Estimated annual cost and just for simplicity, I averaged it out to be sixteen hundred. Tons of just passenger car tires. Just to give us a comparison. Central Carolina Holdings would be annually over two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. U S Tire, two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. And then New River Tire gave us the three options, the first option. Think is the one where they. Where everyone brings them straight to them, it's a hundred and twenty five dollars a ton, two hundred thousand dollars. Option two is where we would take it to them, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And option three, they would actually go and pick it up. One hundred and forty dollars a ton, two hundred and twenty four thousand. Looking at all this and doing several months of research on this as well. We would have to change our operation plan from the current plan, which is just the second page there that just briefly states that. You bring them to the landfill, landfill dump on the ground and. All documentation should be there to this proposed plan where it goes into detail. On how you should fill out the forms and actually show proof. Of where the tires come from to make sure that they are generated in North Carolina and that they did pay the tax. So there'll be a lot more verification than we do now, now we just take their word for it. They, they fill out a form and they send it to the state. Yes.
I can bring five tires to landfill and don't, if you don't part them either, per person, is that per house?
It's a per, right now currently it's per person. And that's the way we'd keep it per, per person. Each year we keep record of who. But typically, I mean, that's, that's not as many as what we get.
Most of them probably come from the tire.
Most of them come from the tire places and used tire dealers.
So to cut down on everything, instead of bringing everything to the landfill, they would just take it straight to New River Tire.
That would become our tire collection. Facility, which is just within like five miles from the landfill.
Yeah, warm tech, right?
Yes.
Yes, how, how long has the state, their, their rates been the same, do you have any idea?
Their tax rate?
Yeah.
Last several years, yeah.
So just like this contract that we have with this, that we've had it for several years now, it's expired and so naturally it's gone up some, that's. Probably understandable.
Yes.
But I just. Have we have, we, it looks like we need to notify the state that their, their current rate of return seems to be well below what we. Need to get to at least break even, because I understand you said we had a hundred and forty thousand dollar budget?
Yes.
And the best deal we can come up with out of these three options is two hundred thousand, is that?
That is correct, yes.
All right.
Yes, sir, we're already at a loss.
We're at the state's mercy.
We are, there's, it's in legislation, I think Chris had sent it to me earlier, maybe in March. When they collect this money, right now thirty percent of it goes back into the general fund. So I think the bit of legislation that's there is saying twenty percent and then they're trying to get more money for the grants. The grants is what usually covers. That loss.
And we have no, 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 no way we can add, I mean, it's a state law.
Yeah, we can't, we cannot charge for tires. And they don't, when I talk to Raleigh, they don't consider. The freight to be a cost that's associated with disposal, they say disposal is disposal, not freight.
Which, which option do you recommend to us?
I recommend the New River Tire option one. Being our collection site. And working with the local business. Central Carolina Holding and U S A Tire are both part of Liberty Tire. Actually toured, Ben Bryant was kind enough to let me tour over there and see what they do. So they take all the tires in from other counties, I think they're doing Wilkes County's tires and Iredale County or two that stand out to me. And just watching it go through the process is, is pretty interesting, he said any of you were welcome to come. And just be ready, it's pretty dirty. But they make, they grind it up and they make like the gym floor puzzle pieces, they make the rubber tires that go on trash cans. They also do the rubber padding floors that you roll out for, it's actually, I think it's code now in some buildings to just for sound. So they have a lot of that going on over there. They will process it down to chips and send it off to another recycling facility that has stronger magnets, they can't pull all the metal out. But they get it to the point where it's almost there and they also pull some of the metal out and sell the metal separately.
Is. What was the length of duration on that contract, Jessica?
They all agreed to two years with the one year option, so three years, two to three years.
Do you feel comfortable going with a new. Company? And a, and what year, what year contract, I mean, obviously we're, we're going with someone new that we've never done business before, obviously they are local. What are, what are you proposing length of contract?
Two years.
Two years, okay.
I would be a little bit more hesitant about it if he wasn't working with other county landfills, but he has and I checked references on those.
He has a good relationship with the other counties around us that have, like, I guess, does he work with Wilks?
He works with Wilkes County, the only thing that they had to say was that, you know, about the pickup, when they ask him to pick them up, where our trailers fall, it takes him a couple of days to get to them, which is the same issue with us. On, on who we have now, and the good thing is, is we won't be dependent on him to pick up, because people would be taking them straight to him.
All right, gentlemen.
Would need to modify the operation plan if either way we go.
Is that something we have to get involved with?
Yeah, I would, I would send that to the state, I just would want you to be aware.
Aye. Operations plan modified tonight?
No, it would just be modified as soon as we changed how we were taken.
What you're doing.
Yes. Absolutely, yeah, they have to see it and they have to approve of it.
Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion for, for two. Recommendation that we look, sign a new contract with New River. All right, motion by Commissioner Johnson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goins, any more discussion?
Is that, is that a two year contract with a one year extension or is that just a two year contract?
It'll be a two year with a one year extension.
And you're going to go with someone regardless, your recommendation is to go with some, some tire recycling facility. When, when does this have to be done, when, when do you need to have a contract signed that you go with a, that you choose a re, a tire recycling operator?
Central Carolina Holdings gave us an extension until September one. So pretty, pretty quickly, I may be able to convince them to extend that.
Well, that's a long time for a new contractor of whichever contractor it might be, you know, this tire cycling is a nasty business, it's a dirty business. Lot of trucks involved, trucking tires up and down the road and those kind of things, no reflection on our local recycler, as you say, every county has to have one and that, that's okay. I just, this, you know, until I read the packet today, the first time I heard about it, I just wanted to make sure you were totally comfortable with a new. Contractor and a length of term that long on a contract, it would be. It would be my opinion, if I were making this decision solely that, that we just, you know, we, we negotiate for a one year contract and see how we got along one another.
And I think he would be open to that, he. If that, I'm comfortable with that too.
That would be my suggestion, that's what I would support.
Okay.
I'd go, I'd go that far, but no further than that tonight, thank you.
Was he then with Wilkes and Iredale and?
I know Wilkes County's been with them four years. And did extensions. Iredale, I'm not sure. Okay.
I need to amend my motion for a certain timeframe, I, I went by just a suggestion, two years with a year option. That's what I understood, that's what my motion would be, Mr. Chairman? A motion and a second, any more discussion?
So, so I'm having a little trouble hearing everything, but the, the motion is for a two year contract with a one year extension?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Four ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've just received a text from my wife that my home is out of power and I, due to the storm, and I've got to get, see if I can get in here and contact the power company, if you'll excuse me.
Last item that I have is concerning the Caterpillar D five dozer for the landfill. Last November, I had came to the board and requested to lease this piece of machinery. And after several talks with Ms. Rhonda Nixon. We think it's best to purchase this as opposed to just lease it, the interest rate is two point nine nine percent. As opposed to what we draw in the bank and we have the money sitting in the fund balance. So she's recommended that we do this and Cat Finance says that it's perfectly fine, the machine is on site and in use. And we, we, we really like the machine.
Let's save the county money.
Okay.
Will, will this save the county money?
It will save us money because of the interest rate.
I understand, in other words, you're saying it's better businessless in person?
Yes, as opposed to the lease. All right.
Motion that we purchase the Caterpillar D five dozer. As recommended by. Public Works Director.
Motion by Commissioner Goins to go ahead and purchase the dozer, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? Just to fill you in that we're leasing that dozer and.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
All right. Okay, any discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. All right, next on the agenda is Mr. Chris Knopf, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, first I may have is a public hearing for an economic development project titled Project Wood Grain. And in accordance with the general statute one fifty eight dash seven point one, county commissioners will hold a public hearing this evening to receive. Any public comment on potential investment by a private corporation in the amount of one million dollars within Surry County, North Carolina. Surry County's appropriation as an incentive would be an incentive grant, sometimes called a cash grant. Source of funding for the improvement is the county's general fund reserves. Public benefit to be derived from making such improvement includes the expansion of Surry County's tax base. Creation or retention of jobs within the county and improvement of the general employment outlook in Surry County. Mr. Chairman, it'd be time now for the public hearing.
All right, I will now close the regular meeting and open up public forum. Public hearing, is there anyone here to speak on that? No one's here, I will now close the public hearing and open the regular meeting back up.
This time, Mr. Chairman, it'd be the, the board's wishes, it would be to approve, excuse me, approve the incentive grant proposal. That would give the attorney the authorization to create a contract between Project Wood Grain and Surry County. And once that's in place, the economic development partnership could make a public announcement about the project. We'll say that Mr. Tucker with the E D P couldn't get here tonight, apparently there's a wreck on six oh one, but he, the E D P is in full support of the project.
All right, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, may I address attorney?
Yes.
Ed, is it, did you determine whether or not I can vote on this? Okay, all right, and Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll address this, since it's in my district, if you'd like. I'm very familiar with this and this type of grant that we do called a cash back grant. Actually, it's based on an investment by a company and they get a, a break on their taxes, well, they get a cash grant. And, which. Is, Chris, explain that a little bit better.
Companies who typically qualify for these, they have to pay their taxes. Cannot abate pat taxes, North Carolina, it's unlawful.
Exactly.
The county issues a grant based on a percentage of what they paid in, there's always a net gain. Typically, the cash grant is based on somewhere between fifty and eighty percent of what the company pays in.
Exactly, so, and, and that's well defined there, thank you, Chris. And Wood Grain is a company there that bought out Independence Lumber Company in Elkin on the Quarry Road. And they are uh the largest sawmill operator in the United States. Um, they're a good um corporate citizen in in Elkin. And um, we have a big demand for um. Uh, it's it's a huge benefit to our landowners to sell their timber. It is um an economic driver. They have dry kilns. They ship lumber all over the country. And I think with Woodgrain coming into the picture on this, it's going to be even better. And uh, so I'm completely in favor of this. And as always, unless they make the investment. And increase the investment in the business, they don't get the tax break in lieu of taxes, uh, the cash grant in lieu of taxes. So. Uh, that's about as good as I can explain it, but I am very much in favor of this and I'll make a motion that we uh do the cash grant, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Harris to do the cash grant. Is there a second? I'll second that. Commissioner Marion, uh, is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Next item I have is another public hearing to consider a an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, chapter one twelve point oh five. And this particular chapter deals with ambulance service within Suri County specifically to private services. The ordinance is is as far back as I can research is always allowed franchises to only be issued on one year terms. What we've learned is is because we now have, we've had three franchises that the board has issued over the last couple of years. This one year term. Uh, appears to um stunt any potential growth by these companies to make significant capital investments to. To grow their services services, excuse me, which are needed on the BLS side, which is the basic law enforcement or basic transport side. This uh proposed amendment. Would take the one year and remove it and replace it with the words a maximum of five years. So the board would have the ability issue a franchise for up to five years. And following this item, should this be approved, we have a request from an existing franchisee. Who uh according to EMS has performed very well over the last year, seek a five year term so they can make a significant capital investment in Suri County. I worked on this with the county attorney and feel like this language is sufficient. Um, that's the only change would be to remove one year and replace it with the words a maximum of five years. Mr. Chairman, it'd be time, it'd be appropriate this time to open a public hearing.
All right, I will now close the regular meeting and open up a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this? No one is here to speak. Uh, we'll now close the public hearing and open back up the regular meeting. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I'll make a a motion that we amend the the ordinance uh to uh allow us some flexibility with ambulance service for up to five years.
Motion by Commissioner Goins. Is there a second?
I'll I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, if you will. I had a little trouble understanding the motion. Would you would uh could one of you repeat that, please?
Man, we're just going, you know, we're at one year right now. This would this would allow us the flexibility to go to five years on an ambulance ambulance franchise. So we have to go from one to five years.
Yeah, and but this is not a new contractor like the previous topic, and I don't have a problem with that. I I I appreciate that. Thanks for the clarification.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried.
Next item is a request from Life Star to renew their ambulance franchise. And subject to section one twelve point oh five of Suri County Code of Ordinances, which deals with ambulance service. As amended, as just amended, Life Star is requesting a renewal. Their friend original franchise was awarded last August. Their initial one year term will expire in just a couple of weeks. They are requesting a five year renewal term. And the reason for this request to allow the app. They can facilitate additional investment here in the county. Their current facility is located on the. Fire and have initiated uh discussions with a developer here in the county to have a second facility located just outside of Mount Erie. Allow them to have multiple base here and not based out of one facility. Talking with Eric Southern, he believes this is uh um needed. I would agree with him and I would recommend the board approve. A longer renewal term.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of our attorney now before a motion or something? What's the what's what's in the the contract pertaining to out re the sign?
Proper notice, either party can get out of the contract. A. Not live up to terms of the contract, we can terminate the contract or call.
Thank you, sir. All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Excited, Mr. Chairman, is Suri County is in possession possession of fifty percent of its American Rescue Plan or ARP allocation. And the remainder, the additional fifty percent will be dispersed in May of twenty twenty two. Um, over the last few months, we've been evaluating uh the spending guidance that's been handed down from the U.S. Treasury. Uh, while that's uh still somewhat unfinished, we do think it's time for the board to begin discussing how best to expend these funds. Um, instead of trying to cram it into a to a regular board meeting, as you might say, I would recommend the board to usually separate work session. Just how best to move forward uh with the ERP allocation as a whole. And as I said, fifty percent currently in possession. Additional fifty percent next May. Um, I would recommend an evening, the week of the twenty third or the thirty fifth of this month. It would be before the next meeting. If that's too soon for the board, we can think about it between now and and um. Meeting and we can schedule it after that, but. I would recommend that you uh schedule a a separate work session, um, work through this. At least one work session, but um I think that would be warranted here.
I'm just put my two cents worth in here. I'm good for next Sunday night. Twenty third. Are you asking us if that's just?
Okay.
Yeah. I I think I think I'll be available.
I I think I'd be available as far as I know.
I think so.
Was that simple or no?
Need a motion to uh schedule that work session, not on the uh meeting schedule.
I have a motion, gentlemen.
Make a motion that we uh. Meet next Monday night uh to uh discuss the.
Motion by Commissioner Goins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried.
Do I hear a time six P M? Did I hear that or?
I don't know.
Six P M's good.
And last item that I have is I'm gonna turn it over to Nathan. He has some uh board appointments and reappointments for your consideration.
First board item is TDA reappointments that have been recommended for Zim Zimmerman and Hannah Holyfield. The board likes to take action on that item.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Zim. He's been a good active. I believe he's the vice president of it now. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Hannah Holyfield to the T to reappoint Hannah Holyfield to the TDA. She's been a really good member uh and from down there at Rockford. She's done a great job, very active. Make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Harris. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Donnie Johnson has applied for the Recreation Advisory Committee. Uh, he's a former school superintendent. Um, if he is appointed to the board, that would leave two vacancies on the rack. The board would like to take action on that item.
Have a motion, gentlemen. I recommend him, so I I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Johnson. I'll second it. Mr. Marion, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Remaining items uh for boards and commissions are just some info items. Had a resignation. From a Dr. Mark Howser on the Board of Health.
Hoosier.
Hoosier, Mark Hoosier. And. Donna Collins. Excuse me. Donna Collins uh was requesting the board's assistance uh to get new members on the Suri Aging Planning Committee. She wanted me to ask the board if you'd be interested in seeking out some new members for that board.
Mr. Chairman, Donna Collins is here. Could she come up and explain just a little bit more what she needs? Would that be appropriate, sir?
Come on up, Donna.
Two vacancies.
You wasn't expecting this, was you?
Um, the Suri Aging Planning Committee is a committee that we we as a group, we encompass with our older adults and our um disabled adults. And we meet about nine times a year and we do have the um the Community Care Block Grant that we we actually oversee and we. Um, distribute it among our agencies here in Suri County. And in the past couple of months, we've lost. One do it to a death and one to uh another job position. And we try to keep our members, our voting members to about nine folks and we really. Need those two be added back to the those two positions to be filled. We have, like like I said, a vote and then we have non-voting. We have agencies that are involved in this committee. We have community people who volunteer to come to this meeting, to this committee. Um, it's it's a good networking group that we do and we are under the um PTRC, the triple A. They come in and they assist in our meetings and they help us with whatever, you know, decisions we have to make. You have any questions?
Are you down a quorum? I mean, do you still have a quorum?
We still have quorum.
Okay.
Uh, we took them out. Um, but it we really do need because as Daniel will tell you, because Daniel. Back there, he is on the committee as well. We've got him. We've got Carmen from the Cooperative Extension Service. We have Y Betty representation. Um, can't talk. Oh, we have Senior Tar Heels Legislature. Um, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but. Um, I'm am concerned about the quorum, especially when we have to delegate this money. We do it May of each year and it's over five hundred thousand dollars that we oversee. To get to um distributed among our agencies. And that includes Y Betty with their transportation, their um Meals on Wheels program, and then our senior services with our in-home aid agencies. So.
And and the folks to serve on on this committee, what would sort of be, what do you look for? Middle aged uh?
Any.
Senior citizens?
Older adults would be. Older adults. Um, I've been on it for, I guess, ten fifteen years and I am now an older adult. So anybody who's a caregiver to an older adult would be good also. Um, anyone who works in the older adults or even with disabled adults. Would be a good addition to the to the committee. Um, we try to do a well-rounded one. I think we do a lot of networking. Um. I'm really proud of it because we've gone from a huge voting membership down to a more um workable vote membership. We've um we've come a long way in the last ten fifteen years that I've been on it. We've had, we have to work with a age and program from planner from. Um, the triple A and it's like every two years, it seems like we get a new person. So there's always a. Then transitioning, but our committee is so solid and we work so well together that it's. We could actually probably do it without a program planner because we've been together for so long. And we've got some really good leadership folks, people in there like I said, Cooperative Extension, Park and Rec, Y Betty. We have Healthy Human Services, so and we also have those who don't vote that come in from the Partnership Service with Adult Services. Um, gosh, I wish I could remember some of the other one. Oh, veterans, we, well, we have a um, we have one individual who has retired from Social Security and he's on our committee. So we have that. Um, Daniel, can you help me think of anybody else? I mean, we off the top of your head. I'd have been more prepared.
Are are you looking for any um uh geographical region of the county that you need someone? Or are you loaded up in Mount Erie? Or you got too many from Dobson or or does that matter?
It doesn't really matter because the agencies and the individuals that we are working on this committee, they represent the whole committee for through their jobs or through their own volunteer. Expert, you know, their their volunteer efforts. Um. We also work with the Community Advisory Committee as we have someone who reports on that each month. I mean, each time we we um we meet. So. As far as individuals, just kind of recap, it can be an older adult, it can be a disabled adult, it can be someone who's a caregiver to an older adult or a disabled adult. Um, it could be. Anybody who actually um is interested in the aging population. And you bring into the committee what you can bring into the committee. It's not like you have specific jobs. We we don't. We don't, you know, we've got committees, subcommittees, but it's not like you have to be prepared to come in and do something. Um, you give what what will help our committee. And sometimes it's just the information is what we need. It's the information or it's, well, I know so and so, here's a resource for you. Does that help?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Do you must ask for any volunteers here?
Yeah, would anybody like to volunteer? Uh, Nathan's got a job description.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Also have the list meeting.
And the list of the meetings, which are next, we take a two a month break during the summer and then in August, we start again with our Zoom meeting. So, yeah, he can get you in contact if you have any more questions or anything.
So if anyone out there on YouTube or any audits uh.
Or if you know of anybody who might be interested. We have a good time. We have a good time, I think, anyway. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That's all for me.
After uh General County Commissioner Business, we request for closed session for legal and personnel.
Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to make mention of our um Suri two fifty celebration, two hundred and fifty years. Since Suri County was formed, celebration will be here the twenty this weekend on Saturday, the twenty first. And uh our clerk, Mr. Nathan Walls, he's done an extraordinary job of uh planning this and putting it together. Uh, we're going to have period folks with their muskets and their uh Revolutionary War uniforms. We're going to have food trucks. We're going to have um. Displays, art crafts, food, music, fun. Everybody come out and celebrate Suri County's two hundred and fifty. Yes, museum. Um, courthouse here will be open, is that correct or not? Yeah.
We playing videos up here, won't we?
Yeah, we'll we'll also have historic videos and silent films in this room. Um, Esther Johnson will also be helping people with genealogy projects. And the Suri County Historical Association Association will be selling songyers, raising some money. So come out and buy some songyers.
This. Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make mention of the uh in our informational items, the um uh local sales tax option, House Bill seven oh four, very good deal. Gives counties more flexibility with sales tax. Um, obviously, any increase in sales tax has to go before the voters. Uh, but it's uh pretty good. I like it and uh maybe it'll get through.
And then, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add about the celebration this Saturday. Uh, being I'm old granite man, we're gonna have a granite, we're gonna have a time capsule here. If anybody would love to. Put something in, we're gonna close it up and open it up, or somebody will in a hundred years from now. And uh, we're excited about that. It's looking good. It's not quite finished yet, but uh luckily it's going to happen. I'm glad, I'm glad, unless we drop it, so. Break it. Break it, so. But anyway, it's looking good. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and while we have Johnny Easter and Ed here, Camp County Attorney. That's something I was hoping that we could schedule for our next meeting, a public hearing pertaining to the ordinance that we've discussed for the next. For the next for the last few years. Is that is that far enough along that we can have that public hearing?
Meeting, Larry.
Hopefully, our next our next board meeting. So so we. So you suggest that we wait to the second meeting, sir? Right. Right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make I'd like to see where our county staff could do what's necessary for us to have a public hearing. For our second meeting in September.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed there was a. I actually have it in my papers here, the draft of the email from Mr. Walts on the abatement on the proposed. Nucence ordinance and that sort of thing. And I did look through it, and I've read it and studied it quite extensively and made some notes. Is is it, do we need to? And I noticed you've sent this out for review prior to any sort of discussion on an ordinance. And of course, we know the devil's always in the details, but do we do this thing you sent out, the the judicial process and the the legal? Due process when someone has, yeah, comments and that sort of thing. Do we do this first? Are we are we are we gonna address ordinance first?
I sent it out twice. Comments from them in order to get some sort of. Final product y'all to look at. And you sent it to you to look at, and what I had anticipated is that we would have a discussion, open session discussion on much like we did last time. On things that you don't like about it, that you like about it, questions you might have about the way it works. Why the procedures set out the way they are. Essentially, we're taking an existing statute. Provides. Kind of relief that we're seeking. To. Wield on the county basis, but. The statute itself has no due process instructions. It's like finding something in a direction. So what we have done is take the state statute and put in what we feel are due process protections and, you know, the right appeal, the right hearing. That kind of thing. So that we can. Adequately enforce state law. Go either way. It can, we could have, we could entertain your questions at a hearing, or we could entertain your questions. Prior to the public hearing at that event. What the product. Looked at at the public hearing is probably gonna be somewhat different. We would take input, maybe tweak it for the hearing.
That's what I was thinking. I didn't understand the the cycle of events here because how can you have a public hearing on an ordinance that hasn't been written? You see what I'm saying? Or or even?
Ed, Ed, sorry, Dan can't hear you. Can you speak into the microphone?
It has been written, but. There's no. There's no definite format on how. The proposed ordinance is considered. It can be considered informally by this board. Prior to a public hearing or at a public hearing. Currently, Larry has asked for a public hearing to be scheduled, and. That's fine, and we can schedule it and hear your comments then, or hear your comments prior to that time.
So what you're saying is this is a little bit more transparent fact that people could make public comments, public comments and that sort of thing at a public hearing. And then we would create a document, and then there would be another public hearing? Is that what you're saying?
Or or it could be recessed.
Or we could recess and?
There's any number of ways that you can address this thing. We could get. Your comments in advance of a public hearing if this thing is not the way you want it, or not the way everybody wants it. And tweak it before the hearing is scheduled, or we could entertain the comments from y'all and from the public at the public hearing. And if the thing is not as it should be following the hearing, that hearing could be recessed, or another one could be convened.
And I think it's good that we had that we that you're suggesting a public hearing because give the public. Allow them to have input on it. And I know we've, as commissioners, we've already made a lot of comments because we had we had a big discussion on it back during the. Oh, it's some meeting two or three months ago. I don't remember. Yeah, back in the winter. And so, yeah, I'm I'm prepared to take a fair look at it. So, yeah, thank you.
Well, all I want, Mr. Attorney, is that that we proceed. So it sounds like what you can do, we can we can schedule a public hearing on our second meeting in September. And we can hear what we have our thoughts, we can hear what the public has to say. And that's that's progress, in my opinion. And and so then, according to our chairman or advice of you, that we can recess. Or whatever, and then we then we are then we're gonna be timed for us to make a decision. Is that is that the correct way it should work?
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I I want to, I I'd like for the public hearing, I hope, and give ample time for the public to know about it. Our second meeting, which will be the third Monday in September.
And there will be a public notice of the of the here the public hearing published in the Mount Erie News.
Right.
And the Elka.
But here we are on the people zooming in and everything. It's they they've got a little advanced notice. They got a month's notice also, so. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir. I'm in favor of the of. Hearing and ask.
Anything else? County Commissioner Business. Commissioner Tucker, have you got anything?
Uh, no, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. All well.
All right, well, I went to Wilmington this past weekend for the County Commissioners of the State Convention. We voted on one person for the second vice president for the coming year. Had several sessions, had some good meetings. It was hot down there. You thought it was hot here. It was hot in Wilmington. So glad to be back home and. But. Yeah, we were represented. Chris and I went, we played, we had a little round of golf, and we hit it a lot, so. But we had a good time, so.
Go ahead and tell on yourself now.
We got our money. But it was all right. It was beautiful course, beautiful day, met some good people, so. That's all I've got to say.
Mr. Chairman, I'll bring attention to the Blue Star Memorial Marker dedication on September the 10th, 2021. Obviously, we'll probably announce this again. The. Sponsored by the Surrey County Commissioners and the Modern Gardeners Garden Club that do such a great job and very appreciative of you, Terry. Terry Willis and a lot of good folks doing a lot of good things to honor our Armed Forces of the United States of America, as well as keep our historic courthouse grounds really, really pretty. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say you you thank the citizens of Surrey County a while ago for paying their property taxes. I'd like to thank the citizens, all citizens of Surrey County, plus everybody that rides through Surrey County. We're spending money in Surrey County. Because our tax, our sales tax revenue is is breaking records also this past year. And I just, it pleases me that we do what we can to keep it within Surrey County as best we can. So I'm ticked. I think all of our citizens needs to know that also. We're very pleased. If you have to spend it, try to spend it in Surrey as best you can. Thank you. All right. Couple of weeks ago, we had a groundbreaking ceremony off of Old 601 right outside of Dobson, a ribbon cutting, I'm sorry. A new. Place to put in a canoes and kayaks and beautiful place. If you haven't seen it, right right past the stoplight going to Mount Erie out of Dobson. On the right, this beautiful place and. Had a good time there, and we had a. Groundbreaking ceremony scheduled for then in the morning of the new jail. Detention center, but. The Lord said we weren't gonna do that in the morning, so we postponed it till next Tuesday at 10 o'clock. Twenty-fourth at 10 o'clock. So you wanna see what's gonna be happening down in the field behind the courthouse? Come on out. So look, we're excited about it. It's sad that we've got to do it. But it's it's a great day that detention officers and. And the inmates too. It's a dangerous situation for what we've got right now. I will say that we do have 187 in-house right now as of today. And we we're housing 60 outside of county. In a year and a half, hopefully, we can cut those, cut that money down and keep them in Surrey County. And it'll be a great time when we can have a safer place for our officers to be working in. So come on out next Tuesday. All right. Anyone else?
The time capsule that Larry mentioned, if you look at the most recent article on the Mount Erie News, there's a list there for the public to read about what we would accept in that time capsule. And the Mount Erie News also has a special section coming out Wednesday dedicated to Surrey 250.
Thank you, Nathan. Thank you for all, like Mr. Harris said, thank you for all the work that you've done on this. It's. Looks like it's gonna be pretty weather, so invite your friends and family. We've got. We're gonna have a good time out here on next Saturday, so celebrating Surrey County. I have a motion to adjourn, gentlemen.
Motion to enter into closed session?
Motion to enter into closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.